So, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the South Burlington City Council meeting for December first, 2025. Is this a little too loud?
No.
Okay, alright, great. We will start tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Lori, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lori.
Yep.
Item two, instructions on exiting the building in case of emergency and review of technology options. Jesse Baker, City Manager.
Thank you. So, for those in the room, thank you for joining us. If you would like to talk during an item on the agenda, come to the mic or raise your hand and the chair will call on you. If there's an emergency in this building, you can go out the left or right side of the rear of the auditorium and then turn left or right to get outside. For those joining remotely, thanks for joining us as well. If you would like to speak during an item on our agenda, please raise your, use the raise your hand feature in the webinar, Zoom webinar, or indicate in the Q and A that you would like to speak, and I will have the chair call on you. Other than that, we are not monitoring the chat for content.
Thank you, Jesse. Item number three, agenda review. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes in the order of the agenda items tonight?
Not a change.
You turn on your mic?
If we could discuss parking, uh, uh, road signs, street signs. Street signs.
Street signs, at other business?
Mm-hmm.
In the U, okay, fine, that's great. Other than that, no changes, folks, alright. Okay, we're now gonna go to item number four, which is comments and questions from the public not related to the agenda. Is there anybody online or in the auditorium who wants to make a comment about something that's not on the agenda tonight? I don't see any hands up online. Okay, we will move on to councillor's announcements and reports on committee assignments and the city manager's report. Who would like to start tonight? Ann? No? No, okay. Lori?
Sure.
Let's see, since our last council meeting, actually hasn't been anything. That's a quick report?
Thank you very much.
For that very long report. Andrew?
Yeah, just a few things. Let's see, so along with Tim, I attended a ribbon-cutting ceremony, got to hear wonderful words from our chair, celebrating the opening of a new shared-use path along Airport Drive. It's really wonderful addition to the city. It's a kind of the first phase, a major phase, and then there may be an addition at some future point. I think it's close to a mile or so, so that was really cool. Tended the SBBA full meeting along with a bunch of us as well, and heard from Jesse, who had wonderful things to say as usual, and our, and our chief, about the things that he's working on and, and hopes to accomplish, and kind of the state, the state of public safety in this city. And that was, that was good to hear from him. And then finally, I attended Economic Development Committee meeting, discussed a number of things, among other things, they spent some time talking about the, the budget and what they would like to ask us in relation to the budget, in terms of supporting the economic development plan that we now have, and we either have or will shortly receive a letter from them on that, so, yeah.
Thank you, Andrew. Elizabeth?
Thanks, Tim. Also attended the SBBA meeting, it was very good conversations. The Housing Committee met, and one of the things that I think council can look forward to is a resolution to join the Let's Build Homes Coalition. So that will be coming on a future agenda at some point. Tim and I had a conversation with the councillor that was lightly attended. Tim and I had a great time getting caught up. But one thing that came up was the notion of the see, click, fix functionality, and one thing I learned subsequent to that meeting is that we actually have tried that as a city in the past or subscribe to that. And I'm not sure what the rationale was, other than maybe cost and return on it, but there is a site that is available to community members to provide input to the Department of Public Works on issues that may come up. So it would be great to make sure we're communicating that when we have the opportunity and that it's easily available on the website. And then I had an opportunity to serve with Tim and several others at another one of the fantastic Park and Rec events, one of the Thanksgiving dinners that was sponsored at the senior center, had an opportunity to serve there, and it was a crowd, I think there was seventy-five or eighty, including several of our firefighters who were in attendance at the first meal, and I understood that we might had, have had some of our police officers attending the second, but a lot of community support and great cooking, and as always, Adam did a wonderful job coordinating that. Thanks.
Thank you, Elizabeth. There's a lot of overlap in what I did over the last couple of weeks. I also attended the SBBA meeting at OnLogic where Jesse and Chief Bro presented. I attended an Energy Committee meeting where there was some discussion about what they should do to prioritize their next action item and what project they should undertake. Also, Keith Epstein donated two infrared imaging devices to use to study your house from the inside or outside for energy efficiency, and I think they're in the library now to check out. I think there was already an imager there before, so maybe there are three items there now if you want to check it out. That's really, I, I want to try that myself. I also attended the community dinner and, with Elizabeth, and we doled out stuffing and mashed potatoes and turkey and some other, I'm telling you, the smell of turkey on Saturday was driving me nuts. It was, it smelled really good, and the, the staff spent a good amount of time the previous day cooking everything, so that was great. And, and a lot of the firefighters showed up, and somebody came back for seconds, believe it or not. Yeah, I guess I wasn't serving enough the first time. I also attended the ribbon-cutting for the new bike path adjacent to the airport, as Andrew reported, and gave a short speech after Mayor Emma, who was there. Nick Longo was there and his assistant was there as well. And it's a really nice path, I didn't have a chance to walk the whole thing. I think it's about a half a mile approximately, and so a good first stage in, in the ongoing projects for the airport. And then I, I was with Elizabeth, had a conversation with councillor at the library, and we did have one person show up, who happened to be my wife's cousin, so it's a small world. And so that's, that's all I have. Jesse? You did want to say something, go ahead.
Besides attending the SBBA meeting with everyone else, I thought there was a good turnout, and afterwards, people appreciate that we go. But also, I attended the City Center collaborative meeting, and I think that it's very exciting how they are organizing. I mean, this is a, they're refocusing and really doing a good job in setting up structures and plans, and so I'm really very excited about how they will support the continuing relationship-building with businesses and people around Market Street.
Thank you, Ann. Jesse?
Great, thank you. Few updates for the community and the council. In talking with the superintendent and the Chair of the School Board, we are looking at that January twenty-first date for our Steering Committee meeting. That's the charter required meeting between the School Board and the City Council to share budgets. It's a Wednesday evening, so they would do it for the first hour before their regular meeting, so we would meet at the school department. So if you have a conflict with that, if you could let me know, that would be great. A few, I believe it would be six to seven with their meeting starting at seven. We have had, in the past, you all, so a couple of updates from the team. In the past, you all have invested in paramedic training for our fire department. We've had two firefighters get sort of, pass their certification to become the paramedics and have three more in classes, which is great, building our ranks and our ability to respond in, at home or in transit. Nick and Chief Bro and the team are working on migrating the Police Department over to a .gov website email address server. This will be a huge process improvement for the city. Right now, it's very hard for us to share documents back and forth. It will also bring them into the .gov security coverage as well, so lots of work there, thank you, guys. Also want to highlight from Bree that as of the twenty-fourth, the library is offering access to the New York Times Digital Edition, which is very cool. So patrons who are in City Hall on the library Wi-Fi can access the New York Times from their own devices, and then cardholders can get a twenty-four-hour pass to code to access it otherwise. And a huge thanks to the Library Foundation for their sponsorship of that service. The library is also now fully staffed and prepared for new Sunday hours in the first, in Janu, starting in January. So this was a big priority for you all during last year's budget. Be on the lookout for new branding and media push about that starting this week. Mentioned the community dinner. Also want to highlight, Adam and his team spearheaded, following the last statewide Recreation and Parks Conference that was really focused on facilities and programming and camps, that they wanted more to focus on programming and sharing events and innovative ideas. So they are hosting a conference for their regional partners across the state, to their colleagues across the state here at City Hall on December ninth, to share information and ideas about programming. Paul today was at the State's Land Use Review Board hearing, the site visit for Chinatown County as they look at the statewide regional map, or statewide regional map, and specifically the Chinatown County regional map. So haven't heard his full update yet, but thank you for being there, Paul, to represent us. And then just a reminder to the council and the community that five-thirty on Thursday here is the next public meeting on the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. Thanks.
Thank you, Jesse. We'll now move on to item number six, which is the Consent Agenda. And tonight, we have several items. Item six A, which is consider and sign the disbursements. Six B, which is approve the Garden Street Plowing Agreement. Six C, approve the South Detillio Drive Plowing Agreement. Item six D, receive the October financials. And six E, approve the presented changes to the 2025 Grand List under the Errors and Omissions Provision as set forth in Title thirty-two of the Vermont State Statutes. Can I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 And it's unanimous, thank you. So now we'll move on to item seven, which is the FY27 Budget. Receive the city manager's proposed FY27 City Budget. Jesse Baker, City Manager.
Great. A little bit of technical difficulty with this earlier today, so I'm just gonna make sure I can, yes, excellent. So, I don't think I can change anything else about that. Thank you for having us. I'm gonna ask Martha and Rich to come down and sit at the front table with me, so I have the privilege right now. Come on down. While I have the privilege of presenting our FY27 Proposed City Budget to you tonight, really, this is a tremendous amount of work done by Martha, our Finance Director, and Rich, our Deputy Finance Director, as well as all of the department heads in the city. We, as a team, really have a goal of presenting you a budget that is our shared budget, and it's not necessarily departments, individual departments against one another towards budget, because very little of what any of us do, we solely do within our service area. We are all interconnected. So if you will bear with me for a minute, I would love to introduce who's in the room, both for the community and just to thank them for their work. So we have, that compute, that monitor has gone off. Can you try turning it off? Oh, there it's back on. Good job, Steve. So we have our Deputy City Manager and Fire Chief, Steve Locke. At the table, we have our Finance Director, Martha Munchar, and our Deputy Finance Director, Rich Donahue. We have Colin McNeil, our City Attorney, and Jared Peller, and our Deputy City Attorney, Paul Connor, our Director of Planning and Zoning, Chris Corbin, our Deputy Fire Chief, Bill Bro, our Police Chief, Tom DePietro, our Public Works Director, Adam Math, our Recreation and Parks Director, Nick Jengrow, our IT Director, Maddie Sousa, our HR Manager, Bettina Miguez, our Climate Action Manager, Holly Resource City Clerk, Bree Droppa, our Library Director, and I think we have a few, we may have others. Anna Jopraski is online, our Data Manager as well. So with that, I'm gonna give you a high-level overview of our proposed budget tonight. This is really meant to paint the big picture of where we are, and then throughout the next six weeks, you will hear individual department presentations from the team, receive any data you request, and we'll go from there. I do want to note that on the Finance Department's website, there is an FY27 Budget page, and on that budget page are all the documents that are linked to the agenda, both in kind of a comprehensive book form, but also by, by document. So you can go in and look at those at your convenience. Very exciting, fun municipal budget reading on that website. So the key questions for the council to think about tonight are, are there options for FY27 that you would like us to turn on or turn off to model or think about? Are we missing something significant that you had hoped that you would see in this proposed budget? And then what additional information would you like to see over the next six weeks for your budget conversations? As you know, this, this six weeks, this is our proposed budget to you. You have the six weeks to play with the budget, to make your own policy decisions, and then the budget becomes yours, recommended to the voters on Town Meeting Day. For any budget data requests that we got in through today, or that we get in tonight, or perhaps this week, depending on how capacity goes, we will do our best to get that to you all in one packet for your December fifteenth council meeting, which means you will get it in your inboxes on December eleventh. I want to pause for a minute and say, not only is this budget day, second only to Town Meeting Day, the most exciting municipal government day of the year, it was also the day we launched our new finance system. So, but we went live this morning with NetSuite, it's a huge improvement. It will, you, the warrant you signed tonight will be the last warrant of our old system. We are really excited about the capacity we will have in the future to do much improved data analysis and planning. So thank you to Martha and Rich for leading that effort. Steve did some of it, too. So, for those who have been with, through this with me before, I always like to start with who we are as the city. The, the city's budget is your largest policy document, the largest policy decision you will make this year. So what you are considering funding is our, about a hundred and se, a hundred and ninety-five employees, across fourteen departments, three labor groups, obviously the five of you, but a hundred and thirty volunteers who support us every month, serving on boards and committees and task forces. So your budget process started back in September, when you approved the schedule that we are now operating under. At your September fifteenth council meeting, you received some projections from the team about where we, where we were anticipating being into FY27, and you set a series of goals for us. So those goals that we heard was that you were committed to maintaining our current level of service delivery. You wanted us to keep doing what we're doing now for the community. You set a tax rate goal not to exceed inflation or three-point-three percent. That three-point-three percent was the CPI, all items based in August, which is in our, is, is what we benchmark to in our CBA agreements. You also encouraged us to look at the use of one-time funds for one-time projects to lower the impact on property taxes. You are curious about funding new policy initiatives, like the Economic Development Strategic Plan, City Center Vibrancy, Cemetery Support, and the implementation of Tier One A of the Act Two-Fifty Reform. And you also asked us for some history and information on the two pennies on the tax rate, the pennies for open space and the pennies for paths. So what we are bringing to you is an FY27 Proposed Budget, Recommended Budget, in three different components. So our current, we're bringing you a current services budget that is continuing exactly what we're doing this year. That's what's in your line item budgets at a two-point-five-one percent tax rate increase. We've also created on-off spreadsheets, like we used last year, for you to consider your policy items that you may, that you may want to consider into next year. So these are ideas that we've heard you talk about, based on policy action you've already taken at the council table, and how we further that action. So we would recommend funding two of those policy items at a one percent increase for a total of a three-point-five-one percent increase. But that is not current, that one percent is not currently in your line items, it's in the on-off spreadsheets. And then additionally, we've given you a series of one ti, uses of one-time funds for one-time projects to defer the impact on the property tax rate. It's also always important, because there are hundreds and hundreds of budget lines to tell you about the assumptions we've made going into all of those numbers. So we have, we are assuming that we are maintaining all current programs and services. We are assuming a one-point-five percent growth in our total citywide grand list. As you remember, last year, we were projecting that at two percent. We are pulling that down to one and a half percent, given where, what we're seeing in permits this year. And it's, it is actually much more aligned to what we see, seen historically over the last two decades, so being a bit more conservative with that. Although we are anticipating twenty percent growth in the TIF grand list as a result of these buildings here in City Center opening. We've also built in all contractual COLA and STEP-related increases that we are under contract for, and built in our ten percent increase in premium for health insurance that we are expecting from our broker. We also, as you know, because you've approved the collective bargaining agreements, have increased our employees' contribution to health insurance in this budget as well. We're also experiencing, our partners seeing similar increases to what we are seeing. So two specifically we want to call out is an anticipated five percent increase in the Champlain Water District's cost for us to purchase wholesale water. That's driven, again, by capital needs and by their staffing needs. And then a six percent increase to the Green Mountain Transit Assessment for a total of about forty-two thousand, forty-three thousand dollars added in this budget. We've also gone through and looked at all of our administrative cost formulas and how those administrative costs are charged to the enterprise funds to make sure we have parity across the general fund and enterprise funds, and look very aggressively at non-property tax revenues, interest, local options tax, and ambulance fees specifically, again, in order to raise revenues not through property taxes. Please stop me at any time.
Yeah, Jesse, just want, just, just put back one. So on, on the last line, I think we also talked a little at the last, we talked about the budget, about potentially increasing some of the permitting fees. And is that folded into that last bullet, aggressive non-tax, non-property tax revenue projections? Is that something different?
So the, if you're talking, so that we've recently done the fire, the building inspection fee look at. Paul and his team are looking currently at the zoning fee parity across communities. Those assumptions are not built into this budget, because also staffing support for Act Two-Fifty implementation is not built into this budget. So the idea being, as we know more about that, as the state releases its rules, that we would link that change together for you later in the fiscal year. So it would be a revenue-neutral, if we are going to increase our fees to take on new work, it would be paired with the person to do that work, but we don't think we can increase them beyond that if we're not taking on new work. But Paul and his team are doing that look now.
Okay. What do you mean by aggressive projections? Does that mean more realistic than last year, or, or what we, what we feel is a better projection?
So what we did at, what we did across the board, and actually, it's, it's a little mentioned here, so I will move on. We, across the expenditure budget and the revenue budget, had a built, a five-year look back at what we'd actually spent or actually collected. And we went line by line through where our propo, our draft budget was as compared to that expenditure or revenue collection data. And where, so we got very aggressive on both ends of that equation. So where we had, we're budgeting a line for two thousand dollars, but had never historically spent more than fifteen hundred of that, we cut it down to fifteen hundred. So on the expenditure side, we cut out fif, five percent of what the department has requested that we fund, doing that line-by-line analysis. On the revenue side, we did the same thing, except kind of assumed the other way. So where, where lo, where revenues were coming in a little higher than we had previously budgeted, we went up to that number.
So would it be?
Sorry, go ahead.
Would it be fair to assume then that for fiscal year twenty-seven, there'll likely be a small surplus or a no surplus, because of the tightness of what you just described?
Exactly. So this budget is getting much tighter, much more aligned to the, what we are raising to accomplish what we are trying to do. And then the challenge for us all is, as it should be all day, every day, is to manage to a tighter budget. And make, make sure we're serving the residents based on that tighter budget. But I do assume that there will be far less wiggle room in the FY27 budget than there has been in this budget this year. We also are in a very healthy financial state, where we have a very healthy fund balance. We've met our fund balance goals. We have a safety net in place, so we have, we've built, we've intentionally built out of that hole over the last five years.
Just another, another tangent, going back to TIF, the twenty percent growth, and I think we've also talked about this, but is that kind of higher, lower, or just at what we projected the growth would be to this point?
Alana or Martha, would you like to take that?
So compared to last year, we would say that it is lower. And it is lower because most of the city center is almost built out, and a percentage of some of the building that were on ground by April this year, a percent of that was already included in this year budget. So it's only a percentage that is going to go into next year FY27. So it's just assuming what is in ground right now and what will be coming. And there's not much that is going to be coming, that has been coming in the past few years.
So last year, we ass, we assumed a thirty percent increase in the grand list because of exactly what Martha was saying, where we anticipated those buildings being by April one. I think what you're asking is the long-term TIF projections.
So just a, maybe slightly different context. So when we, you know, conceive of the idea of a TIF, and we borrowed the twenty-nine million, we had a, a scheduled present, projection for when we'd be able to pay down the debt, at what pace and what reserves we'd be able to build in the meantime. I'm just wondering, at this point, now five years later, are we, you know, behind, at, or ahead of where those projections were?
Yeah, we're tracking remarkably closely with the projection that we made at the time that the, that the debt was voted on. So at that time, we knew the amount of development that would be occurring, so we're not, you know, we're not exactly on, but we're, you know, within or exceeding where we thought we would be in terms of revenues. The, I wouldn't say every building is valued exactly the same, but overall, as, as a district, it is performing similar to the model.
Thank you.
Can, can you give a high-level comment on what the assumptions were for the local option tax as well?
Yes, so local options tax is, I have notes on this one, so I'm just gonna flip to those. Again, jump ahead, that's great. So local options tax is one of those places where we are getting very aggressive. We are budgeting above where we are trending right now, and we are basically level funding from FY26. So right now, looking at the October, the revenues that came in through Octo, through the quarter one of last fiscal year. If we were to, if you remember, we're currently collecting seventy percent. We will go to be collecting seventy-five percent with the October receipts that we have not yet collected. So we haven't actually seen the impact of that. But we did a modeling to show, based on what came in the first quarter this year, if the seasonality of that revenue stream stays throughout the year, and we were only to pre, collect seventy percent of that, our receipts would be on local, on rooms, bills, and alcohol, down eleven and a half percent, and on sales, down eight and a half percent. If we, if we model in what a five, that additional five percent will be, we are on We are on rooms, meals and alcohol, down seven percent, and on sales, down five percent at the end of the fiscal year. Um that we are seeing that, we went, um Lana and I went to the Destination BTV Conference last week and, or two weeks ago. And there was really interesting data on travel. Um our hotels are seeing a significant decline in workforce travel and business travel, weekday travel, which is really interesting. Um and our Canadian visitor ship to Vermont is down twenty five percent, so I think we are seeing that in our sales receipts. Um so we are level funding, give or take some thousands of dollars. FY twenty six to FY twenty seven, in the hopes of both that five percent increase coming in. And market factors turning around a bit, that we will hit that mark, but we will be tracking that very closely quarter to quarter. That is a place we could definitely see uh revenue deficit next year in a way that we have seen huge revenue surpluses in past years. Should I keep going? Okay. So uh included, ha- ha- some high level uh things included in this proposed budget. Um so mid-year this year, you all passed your committee stipend policy. Um when that was adopted, we were projecting that was going to um. If every, if every volunteer took it, it would be about sixty or seventy thousand dollars. Um we are budgeting thirty thousand dollars for that in this budget, and that's based off of the number of people who have currently. Um opted in to receiving stipends. So that's what we believe the actual expense will be next year. Um we've maintained our general fund support for our community justice services, so we transitioned that to Burlington, we want to make sure that we have. Funds available to ensure that uh quality service stays embedded in our police department. Uh we've also aligned the community outreach funding to what we anticipate a new multi-year contract will be with Howard Center. We've increased our tree care uh budget, and of course, with the pennies as the grand list increases, the pennies increase. Uh those are both increasing one point four five percent for a total of twelve thousand dollars across them. We've also reduced, as I talked about, tr- trimmed all the operations budgets. Um we have done the same thing with our crossing guard reimbursement budget, this is not meant to not support the school department, this is meant to only raise the property taxes. We need to do the work. Um so our, what we've included in the budget this year is what we paid in FY twenty five. For this service that, that we've reimbursed the school for. Um we are also recommending moving to AI minutes in January twenty seven. Um and I have zeroed out the social service funding in the FY twenty seven budget. Um Chief Bro is working um on a package of um system improvements to really figure out. How we best meet the service needs of our community, and we believe our opioid settlement dollars will be. Uh more strategically used in those conversations than small um infusions of money to a lot of different partners.
Do we know how much money we have or are going to have total in that fund?
So right now, we have about two hundred and ninety seven thousand in that fund, and Colin is doing the research to figure out how much we will continue to. Receive here to here, but right now, the balance is about two hundred and ninety seven thousand.
You talked about um trimming the operation budget. Um a five point one decrease from what was requested. What is the decrease or increase from what is last year's budget and what they are? What departments are on track to spending? In other words, the government's asked for five point one percent, and. Um I'm assuming that was an increase, and so.
Yeah, so um overall, expenditure wise, we are looking at about a two point eight percent increase in expenditures. That, the answer to that is different uh service area by service area. So the best way to look at that is to go through, and Martha, correct me if there's a better place to look. Um the, what we call the roll up budget, where we roll up the personnel's expenses and the expend, and the expenditure expenses. By department, year to year, and you can see the percent change in that column. Do you have a better idea for that?
Jesse, a quick question, um my understanding on the opioid settlement funds is that. There were some specific criteria about how those could be allocated, and I thought it was for new programming. Is, is that a restriction, or is that? I guess, I guess my question is, will there be restrictions in terms of the goal here where something got reduced, but there's a backfill for it?
So that, that is also our understanding that it can't be used to just substitute what we're already funding. So for example, we have not historically allocated it to just fund a portion of community outreach, because we have previously funded community outreach. Um what the chief and Colin are looking into are, are the, are there other interventions that we could be doing to more successfully? Support our neighbors and support especially our growing downtown, and in, in those new efforts, could we use opioid settlement funds? Which might look very different from, you know, a thousand dollars to twenty five hundred dollars to ten organizations to look like. Sixty thousand dollars to one organization to start something.
If I, if I'm correct, it means that it's basically for a short term project or program. It is not to start something up and necessarily continue it.
Or uh to start something up that we would transition into continuing with, with funding over time. Um okay, so all of that uh equals our, the, our impact summary, so. Um this is where you see our expenditure line, the general fund line increasing two point eight percent from FY twenty six to FY twenty seven. Um our pro- our non-property tax revenue line increasing one point six percent for overall. Uh property tax impact with the budgets of an increase of two point five one percent. Again, this is. Uh continuing services only, this is not anything new. So with just this two point five percent increase in the tax rate. The average condo owner would pay forty dollars more next year than this year, and the average homeowner would pay sixty. About sixty dollars more last year to this year. So then we, sorry.
Could you repeat what the um, what we are using as an average cost? Average value of, of the uh condo and a.
Martha, can you pull up that, the spreadsheet? That value is on that spreadsheet. Yes, Martha will look it up for you while I keep talking.
And um Jesse, right here where it says FY twenty six, we are talking about what was the budget. That was passed in FY twenty six, not perhaps where we're landing.
Correct, it's what's in the budget this year, because the budget is what drives the tax rate. So the tax rate is set this year, so that um fif- fifty three cent, five, three, nine, two. Cents tax rate um is what we will collect this year. Um even if expenditures are a little up or up, up or down, that's what lends us in a surplus or a deficit at the end of the year. Hopefully not a deficit.
Jesse, just for presentation purposes, because presumably the public will see this chart, be interested, it would be possible, just like put parentheses after. Average condo and average house with the number, just, just right there, thanks.
Go for it.
So the twenty twenty five average condo value is. Two hundred thousand ninety eight, seven ninety seven. And the average value for a house is four hundred thousand forty two, three fifty two.
So then we get to, so this, if this is that first blue box, the uh current services budget on this spreadsheet, this goes. The next spreadsheet goes down to your policy initiative spreadsheet, so these are. Um ideas for you to think about furthering your established council policy goals. So right now, we are recommending adding a staff person to support city center vibrancy and public, uh DPW staff person. To support city center vibrancy and our city cemeteries. And a staff person, our economic development director, staff person to implement our uh economic development strategic plan. What's in this spreadsheet is solely the personnel cost to do that. Um and you can see, uh we have this as an active spreadsheet, if you, during your discussion, if you want to play with it and turn things on or off. Um you can see across the lines, the impact that will have on the pennies and the tax rate, and at the bottom, the aggregate. Um it would have with the two point five one percent. So with the addition of those two positions. Um the uh property tax rate would increase three point five one percent or to fifty five cents.
Um when you're talking about the new um DPW staff to support city center and cemeteries, I'm. Reading into that, that that is a person to um monitor and. Keep up to date and clean and um stuff like that, both the cemetery and. And the cit- what is around city center, or is there management or other initiatives assumed in that position?
So the, we have a number of public works staff that are what I would consider kind of working foreman. So they are responsible for some kind of technical expertise, you know, our arborist is a good example of this. Responsible for a technical expertise, responsible for um doing research, maintaining records, working with GIS, things like that. But also has the operational skills to get out in a bucket truck and trim the trees. I imagine that this is a position similar to that, that really has an expertise in. In record keeping for our cemeteries and placemaking for our city center, but also can be part of the crew that's going out to help with work.
Thank you.
Jesse, can you elaborate just to start on that position a bit? I guess the um, when you just paid the split. Of uh allocation terms of time would be between the city center work. Cemeteries on the other, and this is expand a little bit on the city center support that you see. Is needed and that this person would be doing.
Um so I imagine it will be, the split will be very different in months, depending on what's going on in those two. Service areas, um you know, whether there are cleanups going on, or big mapping efforts going on in cemetery, in the cemeteries, or. A month with lots of events in city center that need support and, and coordination. Um with the addition of Garden Street, we are adding a lot um more public space to maintain through our. Contract with our vendors, we want to make sure we're really overseeing that, and with recreation parks and SB three C really focusing on. Um placemaking and events in city center, there's a lot more need to coordinate traffic. Traffic pickup and street closures and putting signs out and that kind of beautification effort. So I, I'm not sure right now what the split will be between the two, but I think that there's quite frankly, in each, more than enough work for a halftime position.
I have to say, I just, understanding a bit the work that the Sextons anticipate. You know, the cemetery person would do it, sounds a bit like a different skill set, but I, I'm not sure, it'd be interesting to see if there's a person that. Has the skills to do what the Sextons anticipate and also be willing and able to do what you're describing.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm happy to have that conversation, you know, I, I think we're really looking for somebody who's. Um again, that kind of marriage of um organized, can work with partners, can plan. Can um coordinate cleanups and volunteers and things like that, with that person who's out on the street maintaining the contracts with vendors. Um doing the actual kind of work on the street, so happy to talk about it more, but. That was a solution that we came.
Yeah, it might be worthwhile. In terms of then, the um economic development directors, I, I think it's really important to support that plan, but could you give us? Your thought process around this, I know when we um had initial conversations, the question at least that was raised was. Um, you know, do we have capacity among existing staff, relearning roles, repositioning folks to. Do this role or do we need to add capacity, and I, I gather you've concluded the, the latter, but can you just share your thought process around that a little bit?
S- sure, um so I think the, so the, one, the plan calls for um a dedicated person for this position. Um I think we, you know, Alana can speak to this too, right now, she has really been leading the effort around. Um developing the economic development strategic plan and working with our business community. I think as we try and focus on having a successful downtown, realizing the, the full potential of our TIF district. Ensuring that we retire our TIF district successfully. We ca- the community development world of work and the economic development world of work are too big for one position. Um and therefore, we really need two leaders who are going to be expert in both of those things to get that work done.
I'm sorry, that person also do some of the cemetery work?
I mean, I'm happy to sit with you and talk more about what the Sextons are, are imagining here. Um I think working with, you know, beta on workforce and green taping permitting processes. And some small de- business development is incredibly different than mapping cemetery plots.
And incredibly different than, you know, uh watching traffic and.
Well, I don't think incredibly different than.
But, okay.
Beautification in a, in a, in a place, they're both places, they're both destinations in our community, they're both places that we want people to. Um enjoy and find peace or vibrancy in, I think a lot of those concepts are the same.
I think putting cemeteries and the city center support together. Makes more sense than putting cemeteries and economic development together, so I'm in alignment with what you did. And it's, it's all new, so we're gonna see.
Um does, does the um cemetery position include the administrative? Side of what was, has been discussed in the past, including selling the plots and things like that?
Um yes, absolutely, from a project management standpoint, there may be some administrative support that's given by other, like. Other administrative staff in public works, but from being in charge of that data, again, much like the arborist is in charge of the tree data. Um there would be capacity in that position to do that.
And then I don't recall, um Andrew or you or Alana might know this, but what was the year within the five year strategic plan? That the Economic Development Committee recommended hiring a director? I, I just couldn't remember. Thanks.
Alright, so the other on off spreadsheet you have is um the use of one time funds for one time projects. Um so right now, you have about five hundred and thirty three thousand in your general fund fund balance. Above the sixteen point six six percent target, um and these are areas that staff or others have. Um requested funding for specific projects. Um so all of, so while in the economic development, it, in the. Policy spreadsheet is the staff person to implement the economic development strategic plan. We also think that there's going to be some other costs associated with that in the initial year. Um SB three C requested the additional twenty thousand dollars, uh we have some work to do around. Readdressing for nine, E nine one one, um we did, we had a lot of success last year with uh. Supporting GMT and route planning through consultants, if you wanted to add back in the social service funding, you could do that. Um and then we are looking to modernize our self checkout machines at the library, this was originally in the capital plan. We moved it over to this one time fund um option, so these are things for you to turn on and off. Also, remember that anytime you allocate one time funds in this kind of way. Um it only gives us authorization to spend up to that amount, so for example, if you allocated eighty three thousand for. Implementing the economic development strategic plan, and we only needed sixty thousand, that balance would stay in the general fund fund balance.
So in terms of operations costs, do we have, um maybe it's in the SIP, money allocated to implement some of the other plans like. The active transportation plan, and I know we're working on or try to develop a thermal implementation plan, you know, some of the other.
Um so I think we have, I don't think, we have funding, we have staff support for the active transportation work and plan. What is not, and we have um in the CIP, when I get to the CIP and when Tom and Adam present their budgets. While we have items in those CIPs for improving our parks and um recreational spaces. We have not built other intentional money into this budget for the implementation of the Parks and Open Space Master Plans, because we don't know. What those recommendations are going to be yet.
And the, the thermal um. You know, the second part of the climate action plan, the uh.
The, the building.
Yeah.
Thermal, so that we are applying for a municipal planning grant to do part of that work. Um we have maintained consultant dollars in the climate. Um we have maintained consultant dollars in the climate budget for that purpose.
Okay, that's where the dollars are.
Yeah.
Okay, so in terms of SBC three, um SB three C, I I think that's an incredibly important organization, and I think they're doing great work. I did say a year ago, when we looked at this budget, that I didn't want to be back here again funding them seventy thousand dollars. Um because I wanted, and I still feel really strongly that they shouldn't. Be thinking that the city, you know, well, the city's funding us, so we don't really have to. Lean, say, on a memberships to 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 raise money. And I know, I know they've raised some, I don't think it's a huge amount, twenty-five hundred dollars or something. Um that they've raised and um, you know, I'm just, I am a little bit um. Hesitant to fund them seventy thousand when they've raised twenty-five hundred, honestly. Um and if we do, I want to send a strong message that, like this year they have to. Really be um. Able to show that they can raise substantially more than what they've raised, so we can start. You know, we'll, we'll always be supporting them, but I I think that the balance is, is not quite right.
Um so happy to invite them in to talk to you. You know, I think um quite frankly, Andrew, that is why I chose, my choice to put them, put the additional. Capacity they asked for over what we budgeted last year in this one-time money, not in the tax capacity. Um. Because one, I have heard you say that before, but two, I think we do want to realize that. Almost no downtown organizations in the state are not at all mutually funded, they're usually done in partnership. And this is an organization that is fledgling, that is just getting off the ground, that has a part-time executive director. Um this is a potentially an investment we're making in an organization that needs that kind of. Backbone support to get off the ground. Also, they're working in a city center where, you know, at this point only. I don't know, Alana, maybe ten percent of the commercial space is full. So it, they don't have the same kind of, they have a lot of business capacity in other places around city center. But right in garden and market that hasn't come to life yet. Um so their potential for that in the future. Is very different than it might be this year or next year.
I do just want to put a place mark, I mean, there, there are some, obviously some big institutions that benefit greatly from city center, you know, like UVM, UVM MC that. I guess I would hope would be willing to support this organization more fully. Than they have and kind of share in partnership with us some of this funding.
We do have a meeting on the books coming up with UVM to specifically talk about marketing city center, so our hope is that. We have a shared hope. What do other, would other people like me to invite SB three C back in to talk about this request at one of your discussions?
I mean, I think it would be um helpful, uh and I would find it helpful to know. Um Andrew, what you would be looking for as. Markers of success or um. That in terms of, I mean, we are, we are. We are talking about an additional twenty thousand dollars. I mean, it really is on the size of the budget. Not really very much. That said, we have lots of little things that we need to think about. But when, what is it that you would be looking for? And and you don't have to say that right now, but if we have them come in, I think to, for us to know.
Again, as I said, it's a question of balance, right? Who's, you know, how much? Are they raising? How much are we contributing? What that balance looks like and what, what's the projection of the, say, next year? So we, you know, if I'm here, I don't know if I will be, but when the council discusses this again, um. My hope would be, we, the, the, the balance would start to shift where um instead of seventy, right? It would, it would go down significantly and they would start contributing uh, you know, some substantial portion of that.
Yeah, and that's what they're trying to do with generating membership with some of the activities they're having and pub- publicity. And as, as our city manager said, this is really a. With no criticism of previous attempts at this prior to um COVID. This is an organization that is just beginning. There is a board that is basically a new board. Um. People are figuring out their way and actually structuring, and I think to hear from us. That that is very specifically what we're looking for, I think is helpful.
I see them as being a, just getting their legs under them and, and got a lot of exciting momentum. But I think, just like with the TIF district, we had projections of how it was going to advance if they do come back to visit with us. I hope it would be with some sort of business plan projections. So this is what we're expecting year one, year two, year three, as city center builds out, so that. There are actually benchmarks that we have to look at going forward to see how, how the performance is working and. How to make adjustments if it, they're not on, on projection.
So just in terms of this, I would take out the twenty-eight thousand, as the previous slide indicated. And if, if we do that, Jesse, are we da- are we pretty then close to three point three? Are we? Does that bring us like three point four?
So the, this is the use of one-time funds, this is not.
Oh, this doesn't, okay, I'm sorry.
It's what's deferred, so if you take it out, you'd be deferring.
Yes, yes, yes.
Point one percent, but.
What is the E nine one one readdressing?
Paul or Steve, you are up.
Ultimately, there are several addresses in the city that do, are not compliant with the state regulation. And ultimately, um there, it's just, it's impactful for public safety. And this has been, eh, this is a, this would be a big project, a tremendous lift. Um but one we don't have existing staff capacity for, but it's work with a lot of these developments. That the numbering is incorrect, that needs to be brought into alignment with the state regulations and which ultimately affects public safety. So there are large um housing areas that then all share the same number. Uh and then there may be uh, and so, so ultimately, our staff. With film familiarity are able to find it, but it's not as well as what it should be. And again, the state's been pushing us for a while to come in compliance. And so we will need to put some effort into this.
Is this mostly for like condo blocks?
I think Paul, it's, it's everything from commercial properties to condos to housing developments.
Uh Paul Connor, Director of Planning Zone, it's basically all, did, all neighborhoods and all development that's happened. Pre-late nineties. So, the, what, what has been done since then, since we came in the state, in a statewide E nine one one. Is largely correct. Everything before it though, before there was a statewide system was numbered. Ideally, one, three, five, seven, nine down a street, but in some of the neighborhoods, as Steve noted, it starts in a letter. Instead of a number, which the post office and Google and Amazon really struggle with.
It starts with a letter?
And new dispatches.
We have two neighborhoods that start with letters in their street addresses.
I didn't know that.
So, um so it's a challenge for, for public safety, it's a challenge for package delivery. And then frankly, as we start to see more infill housing, as we start to see uh duplex forming where it was a single family. There isn't any space, so we wind up with one, three, five, seven, nine, there is no number in between. We've started to have to readdress one street at a time, which is uh challenging, because it, people don't see the context. Of, of the bigger picture of why it's happening. So it's been a slow burn, but um something where the time is. Growing to be upon us to, to really update the whole city.
Is this gonna change uh somebody's personal address on their home?
The, the hardest part of this will be the negotiation with, with property owners and, and HOAs and developers. About this is your new number, this is the reason why, it's a slow process, right?
And your, your software for, for sending, for dispatching doesn't just have the locations of these on a map anyway?
It's whatever the dispatcher inputs into the information that they get then from the co- from the nine-one-one system.
I mean, E nine one one, the nice thing is that there was a, it was a metric measurement, every address is the number of meters. So that was before you had any software, right?
Right, but when you, when you assign a number that just is random, um because it's the fourth house down on the street, it's number seven. That, that, that doesn't comply.
But your software now pinpoints where they, they need to go. So what does it matter what the number is, as long as the number is on a map and has it, has it an accurate, you know, location, right? I, I don't want to.
Come, come out and ride with us.
Yeah.
Just come out and ride with us.
But the letters is interesting, so I don't want to take a lot of time with this, but just that caught my eye, so.
And did, was the reason, I mean, I heard something about where's the staff to implement? Or what's, what are the staff requirements to implement this?
So there's a couple of components to it. One is the communication with property owners. Having done a few streets. People have a lot of questions, a lot of thoughts about their addresses changing, so that's a component of it, just the volume of doing that on a larger scale. There's also a lot of back of the house work, so um the land records in the city clerk's office, making sure that that is coordinated. That everything that was organized by one address is uh updated and communicated, uh permitting systems and all that kind of stuff in the background. So it's, there's a lot in the background to it.
Thank you. Quick question, yeah, quick question?
Okay.
You need to come up, you need to come up and speak into the microphone, please.
Are you talking about renumbering them again after people infill though, versus just adding a. Additional like, if it was number three, you either do three A or three oh one, three oh two.
I'm sorry, we didn't get your name, we need to have your name.
Ashley Rooks.
Thank you.
So to, to clarify, um the state nine-one-one rules moving, um that were adopted in the late nineties. Have very specific rules about addresses. Um there, there are no options for a three A or something like that. If there's gonna be a new address or three and a half, that's been done in cities around the country, there is a strict system for it, so what this would be is getting. In front of future new, future infill neighborhoods to address the current homes and the current businesses correctly, the way they. Ideally should have been done forty years ago, so instead of being one, three, five, seven, nine, it might be one, seven, seventeen, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. That kind of thing, and then leaving the space in between.
First moved here eighty-one, I lived at twenty-seven and a half. And I was like, I feel diminished somehow, but you know, still work, I got my mail.
Um one comment on the use of one-time funds, um. There isn't a specific request from the Housing Committee at this point, but there is work that is emerging around housing needs assessment. Type of housing, um kind of the costing um associated with the cap thermal building plan. Um so there's some discussion that went on at the last housing meeting that I could anticipate. Um there may be some modest consulting fees that might be used in this operating year. That might later translate to something more significant and uh to me, that's, that's been a gap um in terms of. Augmenting the expertise that supports that particular committee. But again, I know there's no request in front of council, but the timing is such that.
So we wanted to present this um spreadsheet to you as a tool to use through this process. You have no obligation to only al- allocate one-time funds during the budget process, you could do that throughout the year. Um we also didn't include, and as I say, you have about five hundred and thirty-three thousand available to that sixteen point six percent target now. And we did not allocate close to that amount in order to leave room for emerging needs that the council may have throughout the year. So I think that there could be room for that as that plan is developed.
The, the social service funding, and that's the bucket where last year we had a new formula that was implemented, right? And so we have an opportunity to use one-time funds, but you also have a possible eliminate for more strategic opioid settlement allocations, so. Um we're gonna probably want to review that.
Yep. Alright, so I'm gonna keep going through other um areas of the budget, so in our FY twenty-seven um. General Fund Capital Improvement Plan, the Capital Improvement Plan is in your budget book, is also linked on the website, it's a um. Very exciting document. Um we have uh, over the last five years, really had a commitment to. Ensuring that we are increasing the general fund capacity to funding our capital plan. Um year on year. So the capital plan, just as a reminder, is um the budget still raised by property tax dollars. That goes to fund um our buildings, our infrastructure, our fleet. Um the things that not only do we need to purchase new, but we need to maintain over time. So as we are improving them, improving our assets or buying new assets. Um though with inflation, those get more expensive, so we are trying to ensure that we don't backslide into maintaining our capital. So we're, this as presented, the current capital plan is a five point four percent increase from the FY uh twenty-six budget. Um it incur, includes maintaining the last year's funding for paving, which you increased significantly last year to one point two five million. Um as well as some, it includes a lot of things, but you see some other things called out here. And you'll hear much more about this in the department presentations, but go for it.
Question for you, we've got uh one point two five million in the paving budget. And ten thousand in the sidewalk improvement budget. Um and. We did the sidewalk survey that was telling us the conditions of all the different sidewalks. Um I think ten thousand dollars a year for maintaining sidewalks may make sense. But knowing the condition of our sidewalks and shared use paths, it seems that there's an imbalance there. And um. That's funny, Andrew and I suggested last year that maybe we should take some penny for paths money for small percentage and use it for maintenance. We had also, we had, well, the penny for paths, that's a different issue, we'll stay out of that one, but having. Having one point two five million for the roads and ten thousand for sidewalks, um when our sidewalks are.
So, so just, just to clarify, because I'm actually confused about the sidewalk number, so in the, in the budget, the general fund budget, it says. Uh curb and sidewalks fiscal year twenty-six from forty to forty-three. So how's that forty-three number relate to this ten number?
But the forty-three number that I send the budget, that's what the actual uh curb and sidewalk maintenance. The ten that is shown right here does in the CIP for the improvement and assessment, so it is an annual. Things that will be have ongoing, it costs more than ten a year, so that's just to be building it up annually. To be maintaining and doing more assessment, while the budget to actually do the work that. As a result of the assessment is included in the forty-three.
Oh, so the, the ten is for um kind of consulting work, figuring out what we need to do, and the forty-three is to do the work?
Correct.
Wh- what did we spend this year on sidewalk improvement? Did we, did we do any sidewalk improvements?
We did like ninety or a hundred.
I'm sharing my screen, who's on the spreadsheet of this?
We did the one time for all the ADA improvements.
Okay.
Like ninety or a hundred or something?
So in FY twenty-five, there was a forty, it was a forty K in the budget. By the end of the FY twenty-five, uh there was a work with a consultant to be doing uh the job. But the work did not actually happen in twenty-five. So we asked you when we closed FY twenty-five to accrue those funds, so we have the contract and the full forty. That was budgeted in twenty-five is going to be spent.
Why don't we let Tom have a specific slide about this and his budget?
That'd be really good. Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. And also, if Tom could also just talk about the paving, I'd be curious to know. Um. Uh last time we talked about paving, he shared with us a slide which showed the, the quality. Of a road, it was a seventy-three or an eighty-one, and, and they compared it to neighbor in communities, I'd, I'd be curious to know after all the work we did last year. Where, where we are, and whether the one, two, five, you know, the million two fifty is appropriate, given the level of where we are. And we don't have to do that now, we can do that when we, when we.
He's listening, he's on it.
But that, that versus street, it's nice.
I, I am curious about the um planning around Red Rocks. And there's twenty-five thousand for Red Rock, planning for Red Rocks Bath House, the replacement is a hundred and fifty. Um. I, I, I've lived in the same place for many years, um but uh. What has to go into the planning? Um, why, why can't we just build a new? And make Red Rocks Bath House and Red Rocks a place where people want to swim and use.
Um so we always need plans before we build, but um I will let Adam talk to. Um so we always need plans before we build, but um I will let Adam talk to this in his budget presentation to you as well.
And I was noticing that line item also and how it relates to the parks and open space master plans that are being done and how we actually envision using Red Rocks in the future, so.
Um so the other side of our budget from general fund capital budget is our enterprise funds budgets, these are little businesses um that function unto themselves within the budget, so. This thing. Um so that is our stormwater budget, our wastewater budget and our water budget. Um they all operate as special funds within public works. Um we have seen a lot of cost drivers across our utilities, you've heard us talk about this over the last couple of years, as we've invested thirty-four million in a new, in upgrading Bartlett Bay, um and set six and a half million in our second water tower, that's that's about about it, okay? Um so now that debt service is kicking on and we need to pay for it. Additionally, um while our uh employee costs are going up with cost of living increases and health insurance rates. So too is the champagne water districts um costs, and so that is driving up our water cost as well. So you'll hear much more about this with comparison slides in Tom's uh public works budget, but we want to acknowledge that if all of these rates go through as planned, that's another seventy-five dollars the average homeowner would pay in FY twenty-seven.
So that was my question, that's on top of the
Yes.
Fifty-nine, seventy-two.
Yes, that's why we talk about them all together, they are, it's a different bill, but it's the same humans.
And Jesse, do you recall what the um total annual increase was to the average homeowner last year on utility?
Not off the top of my head, but we would be happy to have that for you.
Be great.
Next year, next meeting.
And when we have that presentation, um well, most condo homeowners do not pay a separate water bill, it is folded into their HOA, what that would mean? If there's an average for a how different condos or different sizes and whatever, how how that works?
Yeah. That, yeah. It's a different calculation to do than assessed value because it's based on usage, so one person living in a single-family house versus one person living in the condo is the same versus a family of six and one person, and you could have both and both. So it's a, it's, I will let Tom talk about it more articulately as part of his presentation, but it's a harder analysis to do than the assessed value.
And don't forget those people that don't even have water meters.
Uh no comment.
Who aren't using water?
So all of this all in, um the general fund proposed budget is thirty-seven point one million. Um the big three departments, public safety, police, fire and public works, account for sixty-four percent of that expenditure. Um public works is bigger if you add in the enterprise funds. Uh fifteen percent for the backbone organizations and then uh you see how those um expenses are split out across other uh departments. And then on the expenditure side of the budget, um sixty-four percent of the uh revenues are from property taxes. Fifteen percent from local options taxes, and then you see the variety from there. Um I know the council was talking bef- earlier about uh the ambulance revenue going up to one point eight million in the FY twenty-seven budget, and that's thanks to the um addition of the second ambulance that you did a couple of years ago.
That raises a good question, are 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 the, have you, has the ambulance started? Have you had any people not transported that were then charged for services provided, just curious, and what did that, has that amounted to any revenue yet?
Yes, we have, but it's, but it's minimal.
Very minimal, yeah, okay, thanks.
Recreation and Parks has zero percent revenue. Um I do know that some of our programs, there is a fee, um I'm just curious as to why that's zero.
Um it's probably the way the chart worked from the line that was in the chart.
It's just rounding, like, it's one eighty.
I'm sorry, could you say?
It's just a small number, so it's rounding.
Oh, okay.
So you, if you look at the chart there, it's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in revenues to Rec and Parks, it's right here.
Okay.
Which just looks very small compared to, you know, twenty-three million.
I I was looking at the, yeah, thank you. Is the assumption, Jesse, on staffing uh on the uh proposed general fund budget that there's a hundred percent staffing?
Yes, that, yes, I should have answered that in our assumptions, there is no attrition built into this budget.
And how many open positions on police right now?
Um so chief?
Eight.
And do we have openings in fire and ambulance? Thanks.
Um so all in our total city budget, if you consider the general fund pennies across the enterprise funds is fifty-eight million dollars. Uh this does not include the multi-year special funds of about nineteen million um that uh is also planned to be spent this year. I also wanted to know, because you know, th- most of this conversation is focused on what will be on the ballot on town meeting day, once you all come to a recommended budget. Um as the council knows, we are also considering a general obligation bond for uh the prevention team at the fire department. Um this team was expanded in twenty twenty-four with the initiation of the rental registry, as our housing stock moves to fifty percent. Um multifamily homes, we want to make sure that they are, the that qu- the quality of that, those homes, especially with a low vacancy rate are meeting those health and safety standards, so about two million dollars would add about two thousand square feet of additional space to Fire Station One. Um Martha and Steve have come up with a funding mechanism uh to fund this debt service with the capital assessment fee and fund balance from rental registry, so it would have no impact on the property tax rate. And at your next meeting, you will have a more fulsome conversation about this bond, but because it's a potential item on the ballot, we wanted to flag it here. Um so always want to uh highlight in these presentations, some of the emerging issues, you've all have already talked about some of them already. Um things that are, we're, we are tracking as we think about um additional costs in the future, maintenance costs, capital costs, et cetera. Um so obviously, there's the um the continued emerging met health and substance misuse needs of our neighbors. We have a number of transitions underway with our data and climate capacity being new, the CJC transition to Burlington. Uh the new econ- economic mobility position that staff person started today, by the way. Um as well as many millions of dollars of capital work underway implementing the Economic Development Strategic Plan. Uh you heard a presentation recently on the creation of a new parking fund, um planned leadership transitions. Uh the anticipation of the parks and open space master plans. And again, in this budget, are no, no funding allocated for a recreation center, but we um continue to believe that that would be an added asset to our community.
Couple of things on that, one, the um recreation center planning, I think should also have a pool listed with it. Um whether it's a pool or a recreation center or both. Um and the other is on on the governmental uh or general government budget uh packets you gave us. Um you list the growth management uh planning kickoff in twenty twenty-six and um I don't see any budget line item for that, I don't know whether it's included as, should be included as an emerging issue here or where it falls in to this, so I just wanted to to bring that up as something that's on the horizon, but I don't see it in in here except in the general government budget pack.
Yeah, so we have not added any recommendation for that in the FY twenty-seven budget.
But it talks about a twenty twenty-six kickoff, so we must be thinking about something. So let's include it.
Okay.
Um piggybacking on Andrew's suggestion that we put the um condo and house values for the uh estimated dollar increase, right? I- is it feasible, is it possible to calculate maybe four categories? Uh condo uh with ta- property tax adjustment and condo without and house with property tax adjustment and house without, because fifty seven, I, the number was fifty-seven percent of properties of homesteads, right, in the city get a property tax adjustment, right? So, I mean, i- if if I were looking at it, I want to know, I'd say, oh, I, you know, I have a condo and my income is such, and I get a property tax adjustment. So my number's probably going to be in this vicinity versus, you know, I don't have any of those and I have a house, just kind of trying to understand.
I I might imagine that 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 might be challenging since what you, what you are eligible for is not just the value of your residence, but also your income, and so as you're, you know.
So but but they've got the data, so they, I'm just asking, is it feasible to ask for that, or is that too big a lift?
So just remember, the homestead does not apply to the municipal property tax rate unless it's ve- it's very, very low, so it's a very different standard than the education homestead rate. Um so we.
That's true, okay, never mind.
We, we could likely give you some data on how many households qualify.
Well, maybe at our steering committee meeting, we can ask if the, or we can ask the uh the school board in advance for their budget team, if they could probably do that as well.
Yeah, they typically um do post.
They do the same thing, sort of.
On the budget website, but it it usually requires the individual to go in and put their specific information in, because it is a sliding scale.
Oh, I see, they don't, they don't just kind of like estimate it.
No.
Okay. Never mind, sorry.
Jesse, the the bullet, um building out data and climate capacity, wh- what exactly does that relate to? Um and the reason I ask the question, one thing that I've been interested in and would love to see is, for instance, how well some of our regulations are doing, like how many buildings are saying at zero, how many buildings hit the eighty-five percent target? What do they do to hit that target, how much solar have we put up, how much are you recharging, right? Part of those, because it's really good, I think, to advertise and market that, right? That we're having an impact, there's an impact we're having, and part of it is to give us information so that we, you know, so the regs don't become stale, right, how they're working, right? Do we need to pay them back, do we need to strengthen them, you know, how, what are people doing, and I think that's, is that part of this bullet?
Yes.
Thank you.
If everyone else understands what building out our data and climate capacity is, I will just as soon have a a, a, a little, a little tutorial, um because in terms of what this means.
So Council Q, if you have a question about it, means that there are thousands of residents in this, in the city that probably have the same question, so I would be happy to answer that.
Okay.
Um so in last year's budget, we added uh capacity for a a data manager and GIS analyst and capacity for climate action manager. So those two function, those functions had never really existed in our team before. So those two functions now are a little less than a year in. When, when was your start date to Patina? January, a little less than a year in, and as I think was actually this week last year. Um so as they are doing their assessment of how to do this analysis, what are the technology systems we need, what are the consultant systems we need? What are the the priority actions we need to actually make the change we would like to make? Um that's why I talk about as a transition underway, is that we have the staff capacity thanks to the voters and you all last year. And it's um what, you know, what new databases are we running into, what are the, how do we partner with Efficiency Vermont in a new way? You know, making up things, these are the things that we are keeping our eye on of how do we have the biggest impact we thought we were going to have with this added capacity.
So this is the step and the creation of the data so we can move forward and know what steps to take, so it's based on data and information as opposed to what I think.
Data-driven decision-making.
Or feel good, yeah, um that's, it's, it's based on, for lack of a better term, science.
Ashley, you have a quick comment?
Can we make this on full screen, is this, there are a lot of text on every slide, thanks.
Do you know how to do that in PDF? Does somebody know how to do that? I'm not, it's not something I am technologically capable, these slides are all up on the where, where? Almost done with this. There you go. That's as good as I can do. These slides are also all posted on the website, both on the council agenda for tonight and on the FY twenty-seven webpage. Anything else here? Uh so just going back to the key questions of.
I had one other question about the CIP and emerging, et cetera. Um and maybe this comes up later in the budget, but um we've got a lot of things that are listed, it doesn't list the the new path in Hubbard.
Oh, that.
And where that, where the funding for that is.
Sure.
Could you say that again?
The new bike path or the new uh multi-use path through Hubbard. I didn't see it listed in the budget anywhere.
Okay.
Um but there were Dorset Street and all the other things, so I wasn't sure where that.
Isn't that in the CIP plan?
I think it's in the CIP, but we can, we'll call it out in the, in the presentation. Uh so just a reminder, the key thing, you've already talked about a lot of these things tonight, but additional option, opportunity for you to talk about things that you would like us to look at turning on and turning off for you. Are we missing anything significant and what additional, in addition to what you've already talked about? Um is there all the other data, other information you would like to see for your discussions over the next several weeks?
So I'd really like to hit the three-three. I know we're really close, but it'd be really nice to tell the community, this was the, you know, CPI, when we started this, and this is what we hit. Um not, we got close, or we got, I'd really like to hit it, and I guess the question was, how do we do that? And are there, for instance, items in the CIP that could be deferred a year? Um uh you know, it's, it's not, it's not a large amount of money, but to me, it feels like the message is worth it to hit it, so that that's my perspective.
We can certainly bring you back some paths, what that would look like.
Any other comments by council?
I'm gonna keep going for a few more slides.
Yeah, keep going.
Keep asking questions, so.
How many more slides?
So I just wanted to give you a couple of, you asked for some information on PaaS, I don't even need to talk through them, but what you have here are the ballot items that have historically taken place and what the history of the pennies are, so for example pennies for PaaS is a ten-year ballot item, it will stop being collected in FY thirty. Um you then have the finances of pennies for PaaS, the projects complete and the projects in progress. Um and then same on the penny for open space and conservation, there are several ballot items um approved by the community on this penny. Uh this is a continuing penny that has been amended a few times, but is in perpetuity unless changed. Um you have the land that has been acquired and the projects underway um as a resource and the finances for land acquisition and the finances for the projects as a resource in your packet. Um and then just wrapping up next steps for their FY twenty-seven budget process. So just a reminder, the morning of December eleventh, we will have our, I called it a retreat, not a work session. Our budget work session with the council and leadership team. Um on, at your regular meeting on December fifteenth, you will have continued conversations. Same on December, on January fifth, and we're in a public hearing, actually, you probably will run a public hearing at the next meeting. Um on January twelfth, you will hold your public hearing and take the actions you would like to take to send a budget to the voters. Hopefully, we'll have the steering committee meeting on January twenty-first um in the annual town meeting day, night before presentation on March second, with town meeting day on March third. That's where we're headed.
Jesse, I'm sorry, could, could we just go back quickly to, um I don't know which slide it is, the project funds, open space line? Uh yeah, that one, so ju- just, I want to make sure I'm understanding this, we borrowed, you know, a million one, two, five, back in two thousand eighteen, and is this showing that the um current balance of that is five seventy-seven, seven, six, seven, that's how much we have left?
Can you turn? So that part is showing we borrowed one point one and the intention was to pay it off with half a cent. So the amount shown on there, I think that's the bottom part of that chart. So the first row on that chart is showing the half cent on the grand list, and the second row is showing the annual payment on that debt proceeds. Talking of, yeah, that section.
So how, just.
So.
Do we know how much is left on the million one, two, five that we borrowed?
Apologies, so on the one coin one that we borrowed, what is left is five seventy-seven.
That's what I'm saying, five seventy-seven, so that's that line, so, ju- and I, I don't wanna dwell on this if we can spend more time, but I'm just. We have five sixteen in this fund to pay down five seventy-seven, so we don't really have access to that at five sixteen, it's kind of set aside to. Pay down that debt, is that kind of a fair way to look at this? Okay, and then just one, it, it, it was curious that we're, we're paying, you know, about a hundred twenty-five thousand a year. But the balance is only going down, you know, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, is it just because the interest rate is so high?
Uh, now, the interest rate is not going up, it's how the debt was restructured. And how the payment would be happening. Initially, it was anticipated that the penny or the half a penny would be going up, so the initial payment were. It would be paying more as we go, so it's how the debt was restructured when the debt was taken.
Okay, we, I'd love to talk about, I'd just like to understand this and we don't have to do this now, it just, it. I can't make sense of these numbers, so we don't have to do that now, but.
Alright, other.
Is it too late or premature to have a discussion about? Pennies for paths and maintenance at, um. And if we have to change something, I don't know if I'm the only one who thinks about this, but to put it to the voters. Is, is, is that, is it premature or is it even feasible or is there any interest?
Premature for FY thirty or premature for this year?
For this year.
Uh, it is definitely not premature, if you want to do that, we would need direction. Soon.
As I recall, there were two of us thinking we should do that this year and the rest thinking we shouldn't. And so we, we're not, right, or at least we, we've.
We tabled it.
We tabled it, so, right, that's what happened.
It's a discussion we might wanna have, I don't know if we wanna have it right now, yeah.
I, I'm not discussing, I mean, I'm not proposing that we have the discussion right this minute.
Right, but.
Um, but I.
Well.
Was, I, uh, my, I forgot that we had a minor just, um, discussion and tabled it. And so I was bringing it up again as. A question about maintaining our paths.
Right, so maybe when we had a discussion where Tom talks about the, the budget for, you know, path improvements, right, or repairs. Then we talk about, well, do we have enough and what's the target moving forward? And should we think seriously about some ballot language to restructure part of the penny for paths? We, we got some feedback from, you know, the head of the bike and ped, ped committee, who was strongly opposed to that. But, but we can do it whatever we want and put it in front of the voters if we want to, right? If, if we so vote on that, supposedly so.
Alright, enough overall budget and I'll fly through the general government one. If you have data requests of information you would like, based on this presentation or what's in your budget books. Please feel free to email those to me, Martha, Rich and Steve and we will be sure to get you what you need.
I just had one, one other question, there was a slide in the larger deck titled special funds. Fiscal year two thousand twenty-seven budget, and there was one line I was curious about, and again, just would love to learn more when we dive into the detail. It was um planning and zoning rec and park, rec impact fees with a balance of two point three million. And it's spent on land for recreation purposes, rectification and a rec path. I just, I would love to understand that two plus million and what we're intending for, what, what we're, you know, what projects are in the works and, yeah.
Sure. Anything else?
I think we're good. So done with item number seven, moving on to item eight, which is the FY twenty-seven budget general government presentation, you again.
Me again. So, um, over uh the. Alright, Ashley, where's that cool thing you taught me to do? There we go, thank you. So over the um next uh two meetings, you will hear um department presentations from. Um, the departments, most of those will be at your working session on December eleventh. Um, the chief will per, uh, police chief will present his on December fifteenth, did I say October eleventh? I meant December eleventh. Um, I also have the wrong date on this one, uh, so we want to do the general government one tonight, the general government is how we think about. Um, city manager's office, finance, city clerk, HR manager, data manager, IT director. City attorney's office, communication and outreach and climate. Um, these are all folks for whom um their job is to support other functionality in the city. Um, to ensure that the external services to the residents can be presented. So these are the folks we are talking about and the teams we are talking about tonight. This is going to be a very simple budget presentation because we are, this is one of the places where we really trip down the budget and are, don't have. Significant changes from FY twenty-five and six to twenty-seven. But we did wanna highlight a few key successes, um, initiatives that are underway, um, you've heard us talk about permitting software, so the city clerk. Clerk's office and fire launched online um permitting in FY twenty-five. Public Works and Public and Planning and Zoning are wrapping up their efforts to launch a twenty-six. Today, we launched our new finance system, uh, we've talked about um centralizing the management of our um. Data systems, our GIS systems, we were the real folk, we're starting with a real focus on parcel data governance. Because most of what we do is somehow connected to the parcels in our city. Um, we've talked about our data and climate uh teams, um, we received a clean audit in FY twenty-four. Which is hugely important to everything else we do in the city, um, and successfully negotiated to collective bargaining agreements. Um, in addition to that, we launched a new website, just to, no, kudos to Andy. Um, with the new website, we are also in compliance with the federal standards around accessibility for websites. That we would not be required to meet until twenty twenty-seven, but we are currently meeting with our new website. Completed our outreach and engage, our equity and outreach toolkit and adopted it beyond planning. Um, launched our drone program, we added six new all-electric vehicles to our city fleet. And our, have plans for most, for char- EV charging at most municipal buildings by the end of FY twenty-six. And have launched our EV charging and public spaces effort. Um, in our FY twenty-seven budget across all of these departments, we are, have really focused on trimming our current services budget. So we are level funding and trimming as much as possible. Um, as we talked about earlier, we are uh adding the stipend, the funding for the stipend policy you adopted. And proposing moving to AI minutes in twenty-seven, we have no significant CIP requests. Um, and then this is where your growth management uh bullet is. Uh, we are anticipating future needs given our growth management planning. Um, we are anticipating um the creation of our parking fund, which hopefully will have minimal tax impact over time. Um, implementing NetSuite for, for finance today with the intention of moving towards. Um, implementing the planning and budgeting module of that next in early twenty twenty-six. And uh we have our planned leadership transition this year as well. Those are our things, not much new.
Where's the AI?
Where is the AI?
Yeah. Where's the, where's the bullet that says AI is gonna be incorporated into every department, every action, every decision? Oh, that's for the.
Back on task, back on task.
Uh, I mean, uh, Nick has been doing a lot of thinking about AI, he just got back from the GovAI's national conference. Um, so there are things that we are thinking about, um, there are also a lot of scalability things we're thinking about, you know, is this. Do we invest in big new AI structures or do we use the kind of manageable tools that each of us have at our disposal to do? Things more efficiently, and right now we are trending in that direction, but I'm sure Nick would love to talk to you about AI if you'd like him to come up.
Are we able to train all of the city's historical data and the current data into one system and be able to ask it a question? Yeah, no, okay, that's. Is, is that a possibility? Maybe, okay, sure.
Um, Jesse, wh- um, what was the purpose of city clerk election support under the growth management planning?
So, uh, we have heard from our city clerk for two budget cycles that the city center vibrancy and. Just added population in South Burlington is really driving a lot of traffic to. Um, our front counter of the city clerk, who's the face of city hall, is the place that everyone first goes to for um services. Um, I think, and Holly, I don't wanna speak for you, if you wanna come up, you are welcome, but. I think we've seen some efficiencies with the online permitting. We're trying to do more of that to, you know, modernize our website so people can go for questions without having to go to the counter. But we are always gonna have um activities and neighbors for which going to the counter is really important. So we think that that's likely the, a next um need as we think about our population growth. So that's why it's a sub-bullet of that growth management planning.
And then curious about what are we using drones for and who are our two pilots?
Uh, so Travis Ladd and Andy Brumbah are both certified drone operators now. Um, we are primarily using them for photography, for promotions and for, um, Tom's got some. Uh, fantastic ideas about using them to manage capital projects um and take regular pictures so we know what's happening on the ground. And it use, either can use those in promotional materials, but also to hold contractors accountable, things like that. That's what I got.
Who, what's the leadership transition, who, what's?
I'm not scaring you, uh, it's a well-planned transition, um, our deputy C manager and fire chief will retire next year. Um, so we are planning for that.
Looks a little young to me.
Looks a lot older than when he started here.
In this job?
In this job.
Okay, this job.
So in planning for the transition. Currently, Steve is sort of doing two jobs. Are we going to, is the idea to continue that um structure? Or are we now looking for um two people?
Uh, we'll be looking for two people, yes. Apparently not, I don't know. Uh, we are, we are looking for two people in that we have a good succession plan in the fire department, it's why uh Deputy Chief Corbin is often. Here for our budget meetings, he builds this, this fire department budget, we anticipate we will have. An internal promotion into the child, fire chief role. To be determined on the deputy role. What did you would like, what would you like to add, Steve? Corbin hasn't actually accepted this, this yet, so kind of putting him on the spot a little bit.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, any questions by council at all? Any questions from the audience at all for that presentation? Nobody online? Okay.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, yeah, for coming tonight. Um, item nine, which is discuss integrating the Safe Roots School Task Force with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee and possibly take action. Nick Anderson, come on down. Nick is representing the Bike and Ped Committee tonight, are you the chair?
No, okay. No, I am just the clerk. So we, we have a little, we had some preview about this, we knew this was coming, so we have an item in our, you know, uh, packet. Yeah, I mean, so it should be a pretty quick one, um, it's, there was a three kind of slide presentation in your packet. Um, couple of those slides are background, just kind of helping paint the picture of how we got to where we are. And then, um, the third slide is kind of the recommendation and, um, we see great benefit in. Keeping a school-based group around Safe Roots. Um, but obviously providing some uh ownership or structure of it within the Bike Ped Committee. Um, so we, what we didn't wanna do is create a Bike Ped Subcommittee. Um, where it was mostly made up of Bike Ped Committee members, um, the, the goal really here was to. Keep it a school group, um, primarily, um, but with support from city folks as well as the Bike Ped Committee folks. And then obviously bring any ideas that come through our Safe Roots School Group. Into the Bike Ped Committee discussions, and then they would be part of those minutes of the Bike Ped Committee and part of that kind of public engagement process too. People can come to that meeting uh as easy as they can come to the Safe Roots to School Group meeting. Um, but then, you know, it will help integrate if there's asks that relate from Safe Roots to School Group. And from the Active Transportation Plan and from the Climate Action Plan and from the Bike Ped Committee, that there's some, um. Connectedness of all those different pieces and they're all coming up through the same channel, so. Um, that's the proposal, uh, within your packet, there was an adjustment to the bylaws of the Bike Ped Committee. Uh, essentially adding a bullet or two about the Safe Roots to School Group and what their charge is. Um, similar charge to what it was when it was a task force. Uh, and yeah, a little bit more of a background document that kind of has more information around makeup of it, what the continued makeup is planned to be.
So everybody's on board, the, the school, the participants are on board, the Bike and Ped Committee, the Task Force, Local Motion.
Yeah, they're all. I think there's some pretty good alignment, um, I haven't heard too much pushback, um, obviously, you know, there's. It takes time and engagement, you know, it's hard to get a group of, um, principals and school board members and others to the table. But I think the work is good work, um, and that, you know, it's had a good year and a half of being a task force and really kind of nailing the. The momentum around assessing routes, and then it's about now integrating those routes and integrating the education. For those school committees, school groups, um, and to continuing to get people to walk and bike and roll to school.
Seems like a natural evolution for that task force.
It does, and honestly, kudos to all the work that's been done with Tom's help, help from Local Motion, Nick's help. I mean, the, the mapping, the, the information that was gathered and the mapping, visibility, transparency is, is really. Incredible, I hope that people will, will look at that and, and just, um, it's really, really good. I didn't anticipate such a good product, such a great tool coming out of this, so.
And I do think that is a testament to a lot of the work Local Motion has been doing, um, but also in partnership with Tom over my right shoulder.
Agree with you there, Andrew. So we have a motion that needs to be made, right, or there's a resolution, is it a?
So there's a resolution, do you want me to share it?
Sure.
So while I'm bringing this up, I, I do just wanna note that, um. So we haven't fully reviewed this yet, but I think generally we will be in support of this. Um, the one, Nick highlighted it well in his presentation, the one. Um, thing that I'm excited to hear him say is that the decision, the. Information gathered through the sa- through the task force will be research recommendations to the Bike Ped Committee. Where the full decision will be vetted in the public open meeting law, it, within the public open meeting, so we can meet public open meeting. Law requirement, so the Safe Roots to School Task Force will no longer be considered a committee appointed by the council. The Bike Ped Committee will be the committee appointed by the council, charged with meeting open meeting law, uh, staffed by city staff. Um, Safe Roots to School will continue to be an active group that informs the decision-making and recommendations of the committee. Um, so this is how they have drafted their amended, so this is the um historic. Bike and Pedestrian Committee missions and duties statement, um, and the red is what they have proposed and we structured it as a. Um, resolution for you to sign tonight if you so choose.
So we need a motion to go back to the top to approve this change to the.
It's resolution, it's not on there, because this is the draft of it, resolution twenty-five, twenty-three.
Okay.
So I move to approve resolution twenty-five, twenty-three, South Burlington Bike and Ped Committee mission and duties.
Second? We have a motion, second, any discussion?
Um, I had a comment on the first um note. Our, we've, we've done a lot of review of committees and we've added and we've sort of subtracted over the past year or so. This committee has seven to eleven members and I don't know what the need is, but I. I've not seen a committee that has a range like that.
So I think a previous motion or resolution that you've approved would actually override that statement where you. So I think a previous motion or resolution that you've approved would actually override that statement where you have indicated the number that you would appoint.
So there's something that?
There, there's a whole history of resolutions associated with this that is not reflected in here. But I think I would anticipate the intention of the council would be to maintain the past number of seats you have historically approved prior to this resolution.
I'm, I'm wondering if, I mean, part of the feedback we got coming into the meeting is that staff hasn't had a chance to review this. Would it make more sense to update this with the current language of past resolutions? So we're not going forward with an, a version that doesn't reflect that?
That certainly would be cleanest, but I also don't want to hold up the progress. I think if that's the intention of the vote, we can do our best to remember that intention.
Agree for the vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
Going on to item ten, which is review the draft South Burlington City Center Tiff District substantial change application to the Vermont Economic Progress Council and consider holding a public hearing on January fifth, twenty-twenty-six at seven P M for the purposes of considering this substantial change application. Lana Blanchard, Community Development Director, good evening.
Good evening, Chair and Council. Thank you. So based on the discussion that, that you had in November, we have brought forth a draft substantial change. This change is to address cost increases that we have seen in the Tiff District project, specifically in the bridge project. The substantial change will allow us to to use the Tiff District financing that has already been issued as debt proceeds to and allocate it between the projects where we see the greatest need at the moment. The substantial change also anticipates allowing some flexibility between the projects as we get real costs. We have real costs for the city center park project, but the other three costs, Garden Street, the bridge project and Williston Road, we don't have the final cost on, will still allow us some flexibility. And so because of that, the numbers that are in the substantial change are slightly different than the numbers that you saw in the memo that was presented to you in November. So it leaves some wiggle room between a twenty percent increase across between the Garden Street project and the Tiff project if numbers come in differently. And, and in addition, I would like to point out that our intention is that the use of that two million dollars of Garden Street allocated funding is a last resort use and that the attention is not to use it at all, so. So in addition, there is a draft public hearing notice in the package. There is also let me see, and I also wanted to note that the total Tiff funds are listed are different from what was issued and that's because of interest that has been earned on the bond that was issued in twenty-twenty-four, the eighteen million. And then the related costs that are in the substantial change are higher than we're currently anticipating for related costs in our existing expenditure revenue model. Based on our conversations with Pepsi, we did not update any of the projected increment. We've left that alone and we're only updating the costs and timelines for these projects.
So we've talked about this before and the request here is to, is to make the motion to set the public hearing in January, right? So are there's any discussion about councils about the subject matter here? Nope.
Can I?
Oh, yeah.
Make a comment. I did have a chance to sit with Alana and Jesse because I wanted to really get clear on the kind of potential liability for the community. And what we walked through is there, there's a lot of moving parts here, obviously, and these folks live with it every day. But some of the questions I had asked were really with non-Tiff funding sources that are allocated, what does that do to what those project funds might be, might be used for? Does it delay? Does it defer? Does it change those things? It, I had questions about the changes in the scope of the project vis-à-vis value engineering and phasing recommendations. And then the, the, some of the first in versus the last funds into. So it was a very helpful conversation to me. To me, there is some exposure. I think the staff has done an incredible job really identifying where there's relevant funding options and timing issues that allow us to move forward with strategic elements of this project, notably the Bike Ped Bridge, which is really a hallmark of creating that vibrancy within city center. So I appreciate the time today and it, it's one, it's, obviously, there's another, you know, decade of, of development on this, but it's, I think it's important to have the vigilance and due diligence that you've had on it. So thank you.
Thank you.
So are we ready to make a motion to set that hearing?
So moved?
Well, we need specific language, I think. He's looking for it, he's looking for it. Move to approve warning a public hearing on the attached substantial change at the council's January fifth meeting. At?
Second.
Seven P M.
At seven P M.
We have a motion, we have a second. There was already a second, I'll second it. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You, you can't vote. No raising your finger to vote. There's only five of us here and you don't get to vote. But good try. We caught you there. Where's the city clerk?
I, I did have one thing to add if, if you're.
Sure.
If you're ready. So I did want to point out that there is also an attached letter that was in draft form for Jesse to send to the Vermont Agency of Transportation. And our intention is to send it, now that the hearing has been warned, to send it now to the Vermont Agency. It talks about programming that we have funds that will be programmed or that we can program. So that would go now to the Vermont Agency of Transportation and not wait until the public hearing.
It's the we're on the hook letter is what it.
Yes.
Boils down to, right?
It's the, we'd really like to bid this project this winter to get the most competitive rates.
And, and presumably letting them know that we're interested in the grant that.
Yeah.
Yeah, any grant.
Well, because there's this.
All grants.
All the grants.
Every grant.
No, but we were anticipating.
Yeah.
Two and a half million from them, right? Something like that.
I'm hoping, hoping, yes. You never know. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you for staying so long.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item eleven, which was convene as Liquor Control Commission. Can we have a motion to convene?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. We are now convened as a liquor control commission. I need a motion to approve the Killhoolan LLC doing business as Sugar Snap First Class Liquor License.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, again, it is unanimous. Now we need a motion to come out of liquor.
Motion to come out.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're no longer a liquor commission. We are now regular city council. And that takes care of item eleven. And we're on to item twelve, which is review the significant agenda topics below for the next regular meeting, which is December fifteenth.
Sorry, that's me. So your next regular meeting, you will hear the police department budget presentation. You will then have your council discussion. We will ask you to warn the public hearing on the FY twenty-seven budget and hold the bond necessity hearing for the expansion of Fire Station One.
Okay. Any comments? Sound good? All right. Item thirteen, other business. You had something.
I have been contacted both personally and seen it on various social media, some questions about signage on roads and in particular, or road signs.
Streets, street signs?
Yeah.
Street signs?
Street signs, yeah, whatever they're called. And, and I guess I don't know whose responsibility it is, whether it's ours or the developer, but one that has been brought to my attention is the I don't know, is it called Two Brothers? Whatever the road is that goes into the O'Brien Development off of off of whatever it is, off of Heinsberg, no.
Kimball.
Off, off of Kennedy Drive. There's actually a turn, but there's no lights.
The new road.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, there's no, the street sign here, you're.
There, there's no street sign, there's no lights and there is a turn sign and
Yeah.
You know, the build, it goes up to two four, six-story
Yeah, yeah.
apartment buildings. And so that was brought to my attention. And the other had to do with the streets around City Market and, you know, what's Garden Street, what's this and people who's responsible and it, it's, the suggestion was because people don't seem to be able to maneuver the city website, which is, you know, their thing. If anything, similar to what Burlington does, which has like a see it, click it, send it, I don't know. There, there's an easy thing, I gather, for people to send things in and maybe get a response. I'm sure that Public Works has lots to do or whatever department it is, but some people want quicker response than they are getting.
So I would love what the council's okay to read an email that Tom sent to one of these constituents who may have reached out to you.
Okay.
So we got a specific question about both of these, both these questions on Tuesday before Thanksgiving at five P M. Tom wrote back on Sunday afternoon, yesterday afternoon, Sunday afternoon. And he says, I'm just going to read the whole thing because it addresses both of your questions. For new streets, the developer is responsible for installation of street signs. The typical process is for a developer to request signs from Public Works and we make and install the signs. We then pass the cost of the signs to the developer. Regarding Garden Street signage on market, which was this specific question. He recalls that somebody noted the missing Garden Street sign the week before Thanksgiving. We followed up with the developer, asking if he'd like us to create the signs. Tom's been out of the office. He will check when he's back today. If existing signs are damaged or removed, we will replace them once we realize they are missing. So it's helpful to know from the public when they are missing. Regarding see, click, fix, we actually used this service for a few years, but discontinued it for a variety of reasons. We replaced it with a simpler form on our city website, which is linked in many locations across the site. The direct link is, if you go, if you go onto our website and search maintenance request, it pops up. But we will put, we will do some promotion of that in, in the upcoming city bulletins. The form generates an email that goes to the generic DPW email address. This email address is managed by our office manager. Emails are then directed to the appropriate staff or we create work orders to address any issues. It's similar to see, click, fix, but has no cost and has worked well since we put it into place. That's what he says.
So this, this addresses sort of the process or whatever, but when a developer has been slow to put a sign up, I mean, off of Kennedy Drive, that street has been you know, there's a turn signal, there's, I mean, the street's been there for a while. And there's no light, there's no turn signal. I don't know who's, is that city?
So that is, I'm not sure there is a planned light at that intersection. That would be done as part of the master plan permits and I just don't know the O'Brien.
And I'm not talking about like a street, I mean, a, a, a red light. I'm talking about a, a light so people know where to turn. It's totally dark.
Yeah, so that whole corner ha, is part of the master plan development. So likely they're not going to install streetlights until they install the sidewalks and the connectivity between, in that new neighborhood. I would say if a constituent or one of you is feeling like there's really a, a delay in a mission critical piece of that infrastructure, then we can certainly work with the developer to see if they can fast track a piece of it. We would feel free to.
That is the sidewalk, the large bike path sidewalk has been done. There is a turning lane and.
It's been done up into the development?
Into the development. It, I mean, you know, it's like, okay.
It, it was like.
I'd be happy to look into that and have a conversation with the developer.
Thank you.
It was, it was open bef, when the buildings were being constructed and a lot of construction workers were parking on it, but now it's used by the development because they can access that road and come back to Kennedy Drive. So it needs a street sign and it's going to need a street light.
Yeah, happy to work with them on that.
But I, I'm good, it's good for me to hear again about the maintenance forum on the website so I can tell other residents about that as well. So you just search for maintenance.
Maintenance request.
Maintenance request, okay, good, all right.
We will do a story on it in next week's.
Great. Any other business?
I have another request, Jesse, from you for an update, if you have one on the issue of food service at, at, or.
Goose Park.
Goose Park. And the status of that. And I know that you were contacted and you spoke to Chief Bro and I'm just wondering where that stands and how we are addressing it.
So this is a group that is, they have no permit to be here. It's not also a group that historically has gotten permits or prioritizes that. We are taking the approaches of we would like to be in partnership with them and understand who they are and what their goals are and provide any support and partnership we can. So that's what our police chief and our community services sergeant are how they are engaging.
Okay. I think that it's really important that we take care of that segment of our population. There's been on social media, a lot of flurry about becoming like Burlington and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So how, how are we addressing that concern?
What's the concern?
The concern that.
We have a vibrant church street with people traveling.
No, the concern is that we're going to open up this food service and then we're going to have this mass of influx of unhealthy behavior and a detriment to our.
I'm, I'm.
These aren't my words, I'm saying.
Interestingly, I'm not reading that in the, there was a posting on several of the forums. And I did a quick review of the comments.
There's, there's a range of comments and a lot of them are, are pushing back.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to say that the, the majority of them are pushing back. And, but prior to that, there's been general comments about.
There've been a lot of comments about people sleeping in front of the this building and et cetera, et cetera. And I just I'm wondering how, how we message this so that we show that we're aware of the concern, but also dealing with it with compassion, which I know we are doing. I'm just concerned about the messaging and the perception and how we, how we blunt it, for lack of a better word.
Well, I think how you just messaged it would be great ways for elected officials to message it. You know, I think we, I think you've heard for a couple of meetings this fall, the chief talk about safety in city center, the perception of safety in city center. Tools he's looking at that, he, you know, he's still in month two, tools he's looking at to come back to you with potential interventions in the future. Also prioritizing meeting partners and working with service providers. Looking at the data of who folks are we're interacting with and how they are being helped, being supported by provider, the provider network. We're not supported by the provider network. I think those are the things we are doing right now. I think taking a really aggressive enforcement approach is not the solution that we, what, what our community needs right now. But I think also as much vibrancy as we can have on the street is, and I see this all the time walking around city centers, many people visiting with one another on the street, going to the restaurants in city center. Showing that this is a, a place of positive civic involvement is really important. So I think we can hold all of those pieces at the same time. Um, and that's what I've directed the staff to do and that's what the city attorney's working on, the city police chief, our partner organizations.
I mean, you talked in a pri, in a prior meeting about how there's foot patrols now. Um, and we do have, um, what seems to me, um, the community outreach team, um, as well as the, um, Howard Center folks, but the community outreach team is increasing, I mean, increased.
We are the highest users of the community outreach team.
What?
We are by far the highest, South Burlington is by far the highest users of the team.
Yeah, um, I mean.
We are integrating those services into our police deployment.
And, no, that's, I mean, I was going to say, I mean, we, the city and the city council has, um, responded, um, to the, the very public concern of what happened in the school and at the same time are, um, expanding our foot patrols and our, um, way that we are responding to, um, people who are in crisis.
Yeah.
And I hope also making sure that all feel safe to come to, to South Burlington, our children and our families and our neighbors.
And for fear of being a broken record as we're coming into the cold season again.
We're in the cold season.
I know, as we have come into the, and it, well, as the days get longer, the cold gets stronger, so we're getting there, but, um, knowing what's gone on with the, with the housing situation, I think it's going to be a bigger issue this year than it was last year and.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know what we can be doing preemptively around that. And if any of the opioid dollars could be used to help stand something up for protecting this very vulnerable part of our community.
I would love the state to do that.
I would love the state to do it too, but they're not.
People are still working.
Would, would this group technically have needed a permit?
Um, I think that's a, a hard line to define, you know, they're, they're, um, on a public space, you're just seeing it for minimal times regularly. It would be ideal if they were to receive a public permit, but I'm not sure there's any way to enforce that they don't have a public permit because they're not, um.
For profit.
Well, they're not for profit, for sure, but they're also not, um, using the space with any intentionality or regularity. It would be different than like SB three C, um, hosting a street party and closing the streets and limiting access. You know, that's, that's what we would expect a permit for. In this case, it would be great if they got a permit and we, you know, we're trying to make that connection of like, tell us when you're going to be here, what support do you need? How do we, you know, how do we ensure that you clean up, that there's no, you know, those kinds of things? Um, that's the approach we're taking at this point.
And if we were ever to have an event during the times when they seem to have been.
Right.
Anything else, otherwise motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion as second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you very much. We will see some of you over the course of the week in different locations, right? Uh, Thursday there, two.